This is Marlene Sokol, education reporter for the Tampa Bay Times. I want to thank and welcome the viewers tuning into the Tampa Bay Chambers 2020 Virtual Candidate Forum Series. The Tampa Bay Chamber focus is on policy, not politics. And while they do not endorse this forum, serves as a means to make sure its members and the business community are informed on where candidates stand on issues that are important to business. Today, we're excited to have candidates for the Hillsborough County School Board District 3. I'd like to welcome Alexandra Gilmore, Leo Hagerty, Jennifer Hill, Mitch Thriller, Jessica Vaughn, and Rick Warner. Thank you all for joining us. And so, we are just six weeks from Election Day. So I will take you one by one and ask you, can you give us a brief 60-second or less update on your campaign? And what message you want to deliver to voters in the final stretch? And we will begin alphabetically with Alexandra Gilmore.
Ah, yes Alexandra Gilmore here. Campaign is going really well. Friends and family have been supporting me the whole way through. Just going out into the streets and getting to know the community. And I'm very positive and just really ready to win this seat. So Alexandra Gilmore here.
Thank you. Leo Hagerty?
Yes, I'm Leo Hagerty and the campaign is going really well. I've been endorsed by the Hillsborough Classroom Teachers Association, as well as the West Central Labor Council. So that is two big endorsements. I'm very proud and humbled to accept. And I'm looking forward to the next six weeks and I want to thank all the candidates to this point. It's been a very clean campaign. Let's hope we keep it that way.
Amen to that Leo. Okay. Jennifer Hill, please.
Thank you, Marlene, and thank you to the Tampa Chamber of Commerce for doing this. What a great opportunity. Campaign, I've been self-funded. I've been using the ends of my teacher salary to pay for this because I felt passionate. I felt like right now we're in economic trials and I didn't want to borrow from people or take money from people until after the primaries. So I've been self-funding. And I will tell you, I personally have resigned my full-time teaching position in Pinellas County Schools effective June 30th. So I can put my full-time energy into both, you know, going after this seat and I'm also opening a business in downtown Tampa.
Thank you. Mitch Thriller. Take yourself off mute.
Yes, my name is Mitch Thriller. I'm happy to be running for the camp for a school board. Campaign's going very well. I've got a lot of community support. I've been out in the community talking to neighbors, folks throughout District 3. And I'm focused on high-quality education for all, safety and security and accountability and physical management. So like I said, it's going well.
Thank you. And Jessica Vaughn?
Hi, yes Jessica Vaughn. Our campaign is on fire. We are picking up endorsements every day. I've recently been endorsed by Pat Kemp, County Commissioner Pat Kemp. I picked up an endorsement from City Councilman Louis Viera. Our coalition is just growing by the day. We're keeping voters engaged. We're engaging in the school board. We're getting a lot of information out. We're sign waving. We're hitting the streets. We're getting a lot of feedback. So we're on fire and doing great. At the forefront is safety, talking about the budget, managing COVID, making sure we support teachers and students and our support staff. Making sure we're making the board accessible to all of our parents and our students and our teachers, specifically our teachers. Being reflective. So we've got a lot of good things in our platform and we can't wait.
Great, thank you. And Rick Warner?
Yes, for the last three years or so, I've been trying to educate voters about the funding priorities of the Florida Legislature as they relate to child protection and education services. I've not been very successful at that. So I decided to run for the school board to make my voice a little louder. I've been campaigning as a different kind of school board candidate. I've been saying that there should be at least one board member who has a financial background and has done the research to understand the complexities of school district funding and spending. Today's Tampa Bay Times lead article underscores what I've been saying. If you've watched it, it demonstrates that none of the current seven school board candidates really have enough understanding of their own budget. Low-budget campaign, haven't even started with ads and putting out signs yet because I've got to marshal my resources.
Okay, thank you all. And we'll start off this next round asking you, and it's going to be a challenge to do this within a minute. So you may go a little bit over. But I'm going to ask each of you, starting with Alexandra, to tell us the three most pressing issues the next school board member will face and how, if elected, you plan to address those issues.
Well, number one would be the budget, definitely. As we just saw that there's a $50 million deficit. So that would be first and foremost. Secondly, the racial inequalities and racial injustices and disparities that I myself and my family have endured. Thirdly, it would be bridging the gap between teachers and parents and the district. All stakeholders need to come together and it's very essential. So for me, I would definitely sit down, revise the budget because we have a lot of older schools that are lacking in infrastructure and equipment. And so, and I personally had to deal with that situation at my own son's school this past school year. So I definitely would want to hit that and go out and check all 29 schools and see what we are lacking. There are a lot of schools like Luke's Elementary that are lacking infrastructure updates. Secondly, the racial injustices and disparities. We definitely need to have training groups, open dialogue without retaliation towards parents and teachers. And that has been something that has been on the back of me and my family and others that have brought that to my attention. And that is the purpose of me running as well. And thirdly, when we're talking about bridging that gap, we have got to get teachers and parents on one plane together. Because at the end of the day, our goal is to have our children academically successful. And I've said this before, that we can't have children on one end, success on another end, and no bridge for them to get across. Maybe everybody might not.
Okay, thank you. I don't mean to cut you off. There's a lot of you here. So Leo, I'll have you take this next, the three most pressing issues and how you will address them.
It's COVID-19, COVID-19, and COVID-19. It's the 800-pound gorilla in the room. And again, if I had the answer to that, I'd have Betsy DeVos's job up in Washington. There is no good answer. The playing field is changing daily. Again, we see what Miami's doing. They basically said, "No, we're not going to start school." We have to start school. I know that. But we have to find a way to do it safely. We have to protect the students. We have to protect the workers. The superintendent decided masks being mandatory. That's a great move. We are going to try and go to one-way hallways. We're going to try to do something with the lunches to try and make this happen. The second thing is we need to communicate. We need to communicate with the parents, especially the ones in the lower-performing schools. We need to get them involved. We need to give them a reason to come and talk to us. What's the problem? What's happening? And the third one is the budget. And that was pretty much explained the other night at the board meeting. $50 million, all of a sudden, no one knows what's going on. That's not good.
Thank you. Jennifer, three most pressing issues and how you will address them?
Well, I find the budget to be frustrating. It wasn't my number one priority right away. I was thinking about COVID-19 again as well. We've got to figure out, look, teaching face-to-face in some form or fashion has to happen. We've got to find a way safely to do that and blend some virtual learning in there so that it's, everybody is being represented. But equity, education equity, our low-performing, underachieving students, our underachieving schools are falling further and further behind. And we can't ignore them just because we're in a pandemic. We've got to go scoop those schools up and bring them along. I worked in the Office of School Improvement. I had 29 schools that were in turnaround before and I turned around 26 of them. I can do it again. I have ideas. And then safety, the mental and physical health of our students right now is in dire straits. They're going to come back to school, worn out, exhausted, anxious, and riddled with scare, you know, with nervousness. We've got to have nurses on every campus. I'd rather see a nurse on every campus before a police officer. I want mental health advocates in every part of the building. It's in the lunchroom, it's in the bus, it's in the hallways so that we can look out for signs of mental illness and suffering.
Thank you. I'm sorry to cut you off. Mitch, three most pressing issues and what are your ideas?
Okay, yeah, I actually changed my order. My first is accountability and physical management, given the current news. I think with the $3.3 billion budget and a half cent sales tax generating $138 million a year, we need to ensure the district is spending money wisely. We should be looking for ways of saving money when it comes to purchasing items. I think, to tell you the truth, with my auditing and management experience to work with, I have the ability to work with the superintendent to create synergies and efficiencies within the school board. I'm confident as a CPA and CIA that I can be an asset to the school board. And I have audited Florida school boards before. Clay County, Hernando County, Nassau County, Pasco County, and I've also worked on Hillsborough County School Board. My other priorities are safe and security. Given the COVID situation, safety and security in schools are always number one priority. However, it's even more. And the last is high-quality education for all students. We need to make sure the teachers are trained on how to teach, and students are trained on how to use the resources for online training and teaching. And given, you know, because we already have some students that aren't have to do that, we don't know what's going to happen, is it going to change coming up? Even though we're planning on opening the schools, we don't know how quickly that might change. So we just got to make sure we have the technical resources to be able to be flexible as a district and change quickly. So those are my three priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jessica?
Hi, yes. So I agree, number one has to be the budget. Because no matter what plans we come up with or what solutions we have, if we can't fund that, then we have a problem. And as we all know, we're in dire straits when it comes to our budget. So along with Mitch, I bring experience managing a budget and being able to audit what we spend our money on. Also, we need to look at some of the federal loans and loans that are being offered right now due to COVID that might have a lower interest rate or even a loan forgiveness process. So one, we need to make sure we're prioritizing the budget. Two, school safety, absolutely. And that comes with COVID. Talking about wraparound services and making sure we have non-toxic environment, clean drinking water. But with COVID, we absolutely need to make sure that we're engaging teachers, medical professionals, parents in these conversations, making these decisions, and making sure the information is clear and that parents know what they're deciding on when they're making these decisions. Number three, we need to make sure that we're focusing on our achievement schools. A majority of our district is made up with achievement schools. We need to go in, similar to what Alex said, we need to evaluate each school individually, find out its needs and see how we can support it. And make sure that when we're expanding and we're developing and we're building new schools or approving new schools, we have to do it responsibly with the right infrastructure. So those are priorities.
Thank you. And Rick, three most pressing issues and what do you bring to the table?
Well, initially, my platform had two goals and with the advent of COVID, it now has three. Assuring the health and safety of both the students and the school staff is number one. My old number one was to convince voters to demand that the Florida Legislature reorder its funding priorities to place the protection and education of our children at the top. My plan is to speak loudly and often about the need for $6 to $7 billion more dollars statewide to bring Florida's per-pupil funding from 43rd in the nation just up to the median. Without enough money to go around, school districts have to struggle to hire and retain underpaid teachers, support staff. They have defer building maintenance. They bus only those students living less than two miles, excuse me, more than two miles from school. And they function without modern technology and other resources so desperately needed in the effort to accomplish the mission. And the third priority is to focus more resources on schools with underperforming students. Not enough to provide opportunity for a great education to all races. What's even more important is to provide equal outcomes. That will require more and better resources applied to key issues of kindergarten readiness, providing that teacher, counselor, mentor, community member.
I think I'm frozen. I'm sorry. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we ran into time anyway and the rest of the questions are not as complex. But I'd like to reverse the order now, starting with Rick Warner, and ask you, what experience do you have with school-business partnerships? And how would you work with your colleagues and superintendent to develop school-business partnerships in Hillsborough County?
I'm missing one word.
Oh, school and business partnerships. What would you do to increase that type of activity?
I'm sorry. And then I started speaking just as you said the word, right before, business partnerships?
School, partnerships between school and business.
Oh, well, there are, Hillsborough County does a pretty good job of that, reaching out to the community. They actually spend more money in a category called Community Services or something like that that brings in grant money for, both from the federal government and from charities for specific programs. Expanding that is a great way to get more resources for our kids.
Jessica, school and business partnerships, what experience do you have and what ideas do you have to enhance those?
Well, if you look at the community-school model, those relationships are so imperative and important, especially in a lot of our achievement schools. I have many years of community organizing where I've worked with many different organizations, building relationships, building coalitions, building the infrastructure needed to do that. You know, in order to really make sure that these are collectively working together, you have to provide a community atmosphere. You have to make sure that the schools are invested in the success of the students and make sure that they're invested in the schools and that the schools are also invested in, you know, the businesses that support that community. So you really have to build those relationships and make sure that each are getting something out of the partnership.
Okay, Mitch, how would you go about enhancing school-business partnerships?
Okay, yeah, I think partnerships with, between the schools and businesses are critical. I've had experience with Planning Commission. We have Future Leaders in Planning, which is a program where we got, we expose students to planning as a career. As a CPA, I've worked with the Florida Institute of CPAs. I've volunteered to go in to talk to high school students about accounting as a career. Also, there's programs such as Future Career Academy where they've got, I think they're into nine high schools right now. You know, 25% of high school students go to college, 75% don't go to college. We need to make sure we expose those high school students to careers that are out there. And the businesses that are in the districts are excellent source of information. The businesses and schools should work closely together. The businesses can tell the schools what needs they need. When it comes to technical training, it's excellent. So I mean, you know, partnerships are critical. And, you know, we want to make sure the high school students are prepared to come out and start working if they aren't going to school and that they have options available to them. So I think that's a critical thing. I think whether it's businesses or nonprofits such as Big Brothers, Big Sisters, or, you know, other nonprofits, the partnerships are critical to the success. And I think my experience with Planning Commission, with Charter Review Board, with other organizations I volunteer with, prepare me and would prepare me to become an immediate.
Thank you. Thank you. Jennifer?
Yeah, I mean, I'm a career in academy teacher and I was a lead teacher. And therefore, it was my job to establish a monthly meeting with students and with local businesses. And we took students to the field trips. We set up internships. So I have a lot of background experience in doing this on the streets. Also, in the Office of School Improvement, I worked with vendors to make sure they were providing supplies, giveaways, raffles, whatever, and maybe even free software, whatever it was we needed to make sure the schools were working well. So, look, we're in a global economic meltdown right now. We, here in Hillsborough County, have amazing construction industry. We need to leverage this. These are great jobs that pay well and we can work with these community jobs and make sure not every graduate needs to go immediately to college. We should totally support the notion of them working within the community at high-paying, excellent jobs.
Thank you. Leo?
You know what, Marlene, this is a two-part question. First, it's business and the schools, and then it's business and the students. Business and the schools, that is a vital portion of what's going on. Because of the inadequate funding coming down from Tallahassee, schools have to go out and try to make partnerships, try to succeed and get businesses involved with what's going on in schools. The second part is with the students. Now, I worked with the West Central Labor Council and they have internships with this, we set it up at Gaither. Right away, they came in. And again, when we look at what's going on, we used to say, "If you didn't go to college, you're a failure." Well, guess what? That's not the case now. We need to encourage these kids, one, if they want to go to college, fine. But if they don't, it's not a black mark on them. There's a lot of great jobs out there that they can do. And that's what we're getting with these partnerships with the CLC, is they are helping these people get where they can come out. They have a certificate. They have an apprenticeship. They're ready to roll.
Hey, thank you. Alexandra?
Ah, yes, great question. That's all I've done. I've literally been in the community since college. I'm a fitness instructor at LA Fitness. I've worked at several places like St. Leo University. And as a fitness instructor, I've had to get people to buy into me and understand that I am here for them as I do currently. And so even as a substitute teacher, that's what I do. I've created a parent advocate group. I spent time in the community prior to even, you know, running for candidacy. So I know that people listen and respect me. They know that I'm here for the children. And so just sitting here, when I have been around kids at King High School, when I have literally went down into the community and asked those managers that I know about getting jobs for those kids outside in King Community area. So I feel very confident that we need to bridge the gap with businesses and for our students to have jobs during school, while they're in school. Because as I had to have one growing up with my single mother at home, I would definitely go out into the community and help to make sure that happens for them as well.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start with Jennifer on the next question. And I'm going to ask you to briefly describe how do we go about collaborating on the development of a comprehensive five-year plan for the school district?
I mean, it's collaboration, therefore, I need to get myself well-acclimated with the other members of the school board, whoever it's going to be. This could be a huge, you know, change that's coming down the pipe right now. And it's going to take a minute for us to figure out how we're going to work together. I can say that I have worked with, tangentially with Addison Davis before in Duval County. So I know of his work ethic and who he is and what he's capable of. And I kind of feel like I understand where he would like to see Hillsborough go. So I have a little bit of a head start in that way. And in terms of five years, I'd like to see us be more environmentally friendly. I'd like to see us being more equitable. I'd like to see our school district fiscally responsible. And I would like to see our teachers in Hillsborough County being rewarded at the highest rate in the state of Florida. Enough is enough. We're huge. We can afford it.
Thank you. Next to Mitch, how would you go about collaborating on a five-year plan?
Okay, no, first of all, you know, as a former auditor, I would ask lots of questions. I'd work with the school board members. I've worked with administrators. I'd make sure I understand the facts. I'd review the documents and what's out there currently. And then I would work, like I said, I'd work closely with folks to develop a plan, factoring in things such as the budget, other safety, other items, and make certain. As a planning commissioner, I've had experience working with others. I've been chairman of the Planning Commission six of the last eight years. I've also met other organizations. So I am able to work well with others. I know how to get the job done. And that's basically how I approach a five-year plan, just asking a lot of questions and gathering information and making sure that we're trying to factor in every, you know, a lot of different variables. So thank you.
I'm sorry, Jessica, what would your approach be?
Thank you. Well, first of all, we need to make sure that we have a healthy budget. So we need to make sure we're auditing our budget. We're getting in good financial shape. We're partnering and looking at all the financial opportunities we have as far as loans are concerned and getting our budget healthy. Also, we need to look at rebuilding our relationship with the community. There's been a lot of tension with the community, with teachers, with support staff, with teachers as far as our school board is concerned. And if we're not holistically all working together, there is an issue. We're not going to be able to be as healthy as possible. Also, we work closely with other municipalities. So making sure that we have good relationships with other elected officials and other municipalities is important and something that I've already started working on. So making sure that we're strengthening our relationships with both the communities and the other municipalities that we work with, making sure that we have a healthy budget, making sure that we're prioritizing all of our schools as far as equity is concerned. When we're talking about our achievement schools, we need to be looking not only at the scores and making sure that our students are academically allowed access to equality and equitable services, but financially, even if we're just talking about classrooms and making sure they have enough soap and water, you know, how our supply budget is given up. Most of our Title I teaching money goes, or our money goes towards teachers. But when we talk to the budget for supplies, it's the same amount of budget, but achievement schools need more supplies. So when we're really evaluating each school individually and building relationships, making sure our district is healthy as possible.
Thank you. And Rick, how would you go about preparing a five-year plan?
Well, Marlene, I'd do a lot of listening first, but primarily, it revolves around funding. The idea of having a healthy budget is just rhetoric, you know, unless you're getting more money from Tallahassee, you're not going to have a healthy budget and you're always going to struggle, "Where should I put my dollars?" you know? And that's why we're so unhealthy that we're 47th out of the 50 states and paying our teachers. And we have that billion-and-a-half-dollar maintenance backlog and I could go on and on. So it's, we got to educate the voters so that they change the priorities of our representatives in Tallahassee.
Thank you. Alexandra, how would you go about collaborating for a five-year comprehensive plan?
I definitely have to agree with Jess on, you know, making sure that budget is top priority and collaborating, you know, teachers, parents, the stakeholders all together. We must, must bridge that gap. And that's part of my 90-day plan about visiting schools and hearing concerns from teachers and parents, and not just hearing them, but actually implementing, creating groups to come together that we can sit down at the table as one. And that's literally what we must do going forward. I would continue through those five years to decrease the racial disparities and the achievement gap that is happening, not just in District 5, but in District 3 as well. And especially with minorities and people of color like myself. So that would be what I would focus on mainly.
Okay, and Leo, five-year comprehensive plan, how do we make it happen?
Marlene, before we start, if you could hold the clock, I want to make sure everybody who watches this realizes that myself and the five other candidates, when we say teachers, we're talking about everybody. Teachers, ESPs, custodians, lunchroom workers, support staff, we just don't have the time to list all that. So I want to make sure everybody understands, no one's being slighted. Teachers means everybody there. Five-year plan, you've got to get all the stakeholders involved. You've got to sit down. You've got to get them involved. You've got to have them look at what's happening. And I couldn't agree with Rick more. When you look at that, elections have consequences. And the consequences are, we are not getting funded. And I went before the school board and said, "If we even got to 26th, that would give us just under a half a billion dollars every year to deal with. There would be no monetary problems." And in five years, I want to see us at a $15-an-hour rate for the support staff and I want to see us at $50,000 a year for teachers.
Yep, absolutely. So I want to start with Alexandra on this, on this next question, which is a huge one for the district. And that is, students with disabilities, can you tell me what your experience with and your philosophy regarding education for students with disabilities?
Students with disability, a lot of times getting neglected. And, you know, that's a sad thing. They literally get neglected. They bring in a lot of money and they don't get to see that money in their department. And this is not just something that, that teachers have brought to my attention, that there's a lot of funds that are not given to these students. They deserve every single right to be able to have an equitable amount of education just like anyone else. And these funds have been taken away. just like anyone else, and these funds have been taken away. So that would be something that we, first foremost, that these ESC kids, just like any other kid, would get the amount of attention and money that they deserve. That program needs to be enhanced tremendously. And so my experience with that is just being in those classrooms as a substitute teacher. I have worked in the VE classes. I've been a long-term stud at Wharton High School in VE science. I've actually, because we have to do rotation sometimes when we're on long-term stuff, I have been in the ESC department, and so I know a lot of those children, they still contact me right now, even at that school, through Instagram, that have graduated and reach out to me. So I have a great relationship with those kids in ESC, and I would say they come first.
Thank you. Leo, what's your experience and what's your philosophy as far as students with disabilities?
As a 33-year member of the Hillsborough Public Schools, I have dealt with them on a daily basis. And again, the teachers and the support, the parents down there, they are angels, because this is not an easy job. This is something that you have to have a love for. They need to see the funding. They need to see a light at the end of the tunnel and not the Tallahassee train coming to run them over, because we don't have the funding to take care of these kids. They are special, and we host the Special Olympics every year at Gaither, and people come in and look at this, and I defy them. I say, okay, pick out the ESC kid and pick out the regular kid out there, and they have a hard time. These kids are special, and they need special attention. We need to get the funding. And again, I'm gonna go back to this, elections have consequences. Until we get the right people up there, there's gonna be a problem financially, and that needs to change.
Yeah. Thank you. Jennifer, tell us about your experience and your philosophy as far as students with disabilities.
Well, I'm the only candidate in this forum that's probably written hundreds of education plans, 504 plans, I've, you know, implemented them in my classroom. It's my life breath, it's my life work, it's what I do, is honoring those students by making sure, not only are they getting the services they deserve, but they're legally entitled to. I am the only one who knows the law, and I will follow it, and I do. And I advise my staff when I, at my school, on how to follow the letter of the law. I am the case manager and the advocate for those students, and I make sure that their needs are being met, because yes, we are getting additional federal dollars for every child with a 504 or an education plan, and it needs to be honored and followed. Likewise, we need to get some of the parents off the dole of using 504 plans as a way to excuse behavior issues. Behavior issues are not education plan problems. So we need to make sure that we're implementing it fairly and for the students who deserve the care.
Thank you. Mitch?
Okay, thank you. Personally, I had, one of my children was actually on a 504 plan, so I'm familiar with that. Person, as a child, I actually took speech therapy growing up, so I understand the fact that, you know, it was, as a child, I was kind of embarrassed when they came into my elementary school class and they asked me to go to speech. You know, it was kind of embarrassing. So, you know, personally, I'm familiar with that. I understand that you gotta watch out for kids and how they're, you don't want kids to be singled out in that respect, so I'm cognizant of that fact. I also have a cousin who is autistic. He just graduated from Steinbrenner, he went to Walker, and he went through that process, so I saw how he went through that. You know, I think my, one of my priorities in my campaign is quality education for all students, all children, and those students with disabilities fall under that. So I'm aware of that, and that's how I'll focus on it, and I think I'll focus on making sure they have the resources so they can also be educated. Thank you.
Okay, and Rick?
Well, my only experience with children with disabilities is outside the school system as a guardian ad litem volunteer. I think especially Leo and basically everybody made some great points about the effort that needs to put, be put in to help educate children with disabilities. It goes way above and beyond the norm.
Okay, thank you. Next question, and we'll--
I didn't get to answer that one.
I am sorry, okay. Jessica, I knew this would happen. Thank you for correcting me.
Well, I disagree with Jennifer that she's the only one who understands the law or anyone who, the only one who's been in the classroom. I'm a certified teacher, I've taught in the classroom, and as a sub, I've dealt with all different types of students. I just recertified my exceptional student endorsement to my teaching certificate, so exceptional students are something that's near and dear to me, the point of my platform. When we're talking about disabilities, if we're talking about physical disabilities, we need to make sure the accommodations are in place, that our schools are ADA, you know, accessible. When we're talking about neurodiverse students, disabilities that aren't as obvious, we need to make sure that we're supporting those students by offering not only accommodations, but I think that we should use our charter school push to offer alternative education, such as monetary schools, Waldorf educations. We have great charter schools like Puffin who already focus on handling neurodiverse and students with disabilities, and we need to expand those programs so that we do have some alternative educations available for neurodiverse learners that don't fit into a typical environment. So we need to look at each individual disability and making sure that we're providing the accommodations necessary for that, so.
Okay, thank you. So has everybody answered this question?
Yes.
Okay. The next one, it's a little bit like a previous question, but this is a good topic. Public-private partnerships are very helpful in certain cities, communities, and I'm wondering what ideas you have for public-private partnerships in the Hillsborough County schools, and we'll start with Alexandra.
I mean, partnerships are just gonna be essential to our schools either way it goes, you know, being public or private. So we can grow with, you know, working together, just like we said, within the community, and so I definitely wouldn't be against it, but I definitely think that, you know, we must put public schools first. They have been neglected for a long time. There are a lot of schools, like I said, that are lacking infrastructure, technology. We need to bring that academic, bridge that gap together. We have a pipeline to prison that has been ignored, and that needs to be at the forefront too as well. But definitely, working together is always gonna be beneficial to our schools as one.
Okay, Leo, what--
Well, you froze up. Can you hear me, Marlene? Guys, not if you can hear me.
I can hear you. There you are.
Oh, there we go. All right.
You just wanted to think about it a little bit more, I know.
Yeah, I was calling for a fair catch. Here we go. When you talk about public-private partnerships, again, you've got to be very careful as to where you're going with that. Now, you don't need to look at, you know, just, let's get the money, let's get the money, let's get the money. You've got to make sure this is going to enhance learning, it's going to be a benefit to your students. If it is, then absolutely, you know, make it happen. But if it's not, you need to, you know, respectfully just say, hey, we can't do this. But it's something that needs to be explored, again, because of the poor funding, and Rick, I know that's, that's your baby, but I couldn't agree with you more. Until we get the money, we've got to look for alternative sources of funding, and if the public-private is one way to go, then we gotta go that way.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Well, I'm assuming you're referring to our fingers getting burned with the Microsoft collaboration that you guys did.
I didn't write the question, but that's a good example of something where we did get burned.
If Kanye West or, you know, wants to donate $50 million to get us out of the jam we're in, I'm okay with taking that money, I'm not gonna lie. But it has to be well-developed, they have to go through a vetting process. We gotta make sure that we're choosing the partnerships that matter. It has to be completely transparent. We can't backdoor these partnerships and decide, well, the money's good and the opportunity's good, so we're gonna make it fit. No, the school board has to know, has to vote, and the school board needs to be given opportunity to go speak to the schools and the administrators and the parents and make sure that everything we could possibly know about this business is out there, because the last thing we need is to be in another Microsoft debacle.
Yes. Mitch?
Okay, yeah, I, I'm a strong supporter of the public-private partnerships. I do think there are some situations where it might not be an ideal fit, but I do think anytime you can get private businesses involved, whether it's mentoring, tutoring, whatever it is. I know the Tampa Bay Chamber did the, I can't recall exactly what it was, the reading online, Storytime Online Initiative. I think that's a good example of something where, you know, the Chamber got involved and they provided a service to kids. I do think I had an opportunity to visit Moore Elementary School. It's one of the couple of community schools in our district. They have 20-something, I don't know the exact number, private partners there.
Yeah.
It's a great school, and I think that could possibly be a model for other schools. So like I said, I think it could be a win-win for the businesses and the schools, so I'd be all in favor of looking into more private partnerships. Thank you.
Jessica?
I'm gonna agree more with Leo that we have to be very careful with this. Right now, there's a massive movement to privatize education, and it's being masqueraded as a school choice. You know, when you, when you step over the line between private and public sectors, there can be a lot of issues there, and we've seen that with some of the school board. There can be negotiation for contracts. When you start to emphasize too much for-profit when it comes to our education system, then we're even talking about more inequities in the long run. So we can't be naive and think that we can't have a partnership at all. Businesses are a part of our community, and if they can offer things like resources, like technology and things in our community that can benefit our students, we should definitely build those relationships, but we should also be very wary of overstepping that line between the private and public sector. As they move to privatize education, as I mentioned, when we're talking about inequities and issues within our education system, if we privatize our education system, that's gonna be even exasperated. So I think it needs to be a very, very careful partnership when we talk about these.
Okay, and Rick?
Yes, well, one specific example, and we'll know how many people are familiar with a program called The Leader in Me.
Yep.
It's a program that was invented by magnet school, elementary school in North Carolina that has twice been named the number-one magnet school in the country. And that program is in 15 of our local schools, some very successfully and some not. I had just begun a project when COVID-19 hit to start visiting those 15 schools to try to find out why some of the implementations were successful and some were not. I think, you know, that's a program that I'm sure there are other similar programs, but it's, for those that don't know, it's based on the principles of the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, which somewhat surprisingly can be understood by a six-year-old child. That's been proven in the school system, and it just does wonders for engaging children in their own education.
Okay, thank you.
Something like that. I intend to pick it up, you know, when I can visit schools again.
Okay, yeah, I know, we all wanna visit schools again. Very frustrating. Good segue into technology, and we've learned--
I can just barely hear you, Marlene.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Very faint.
Okay. Technology. Can everybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I know, we all learned a lot about technology, technology gaps during the period of e-learning, and so I'd like to know from each of you, and we'll start with Jessica this time, what sort of changes would you like to see Hillsborough County schools make to become more technologically advanced?
That's a good question, because as this COVID hit, we realized that we don't really have that kind of infrastructure. So I think we need to look at other institutions that already have more virtual infrastructure that they've promoted within their learning environments, such as e-universities, to kind of see what their platforms are and their curriculums are. But I also think that we need to be careful that we're not just substituting technology as actual classroom, hands-on experience. Like, we just purchased four, or $3.6 million software, reading software, when we don't have reading coaches in our schools. And some of this technology should be supplemental to a robust reading program or another program that we have, and technology is great, it engages students, but I think we need to make sure that we're not just placing too much emphasis on it and that we're instead, you know, taking away from reading coaches or the staff that we need. So I think when it comes to virtual options, we need to build more infrastructure and model ourselves after other successful areas, and we need to teach more technology and offer more access to technology, but also not use it to supplement real teacher engagement and things that we need in the classroom.
Okay, thank you. Rick, do you have your audio fixed?
Yes.
Okay, so what would you like to see the school district do to enhance technology?
Well, we certainly need more up-to-date hardware, and I'm sure software too, for kids to use, although I know a lot of that was bought during online teaching of, during COVID-19. But we even got things like, if you walked into the chemistry lab at Chamberlain High School, you would think you were in 1960.
Yeah.
You know, we just, we don't have the money to upgrade things that are so long past needing to be upgraded, that it's back to the balancing act of where do you spend your money?
Yeah. Alexandra, what should we do to enhance technology in the schools?
Well, we have none. We simply have none. I've been in the classrooms and I've seen that we have none. I'm from Orange County initially, and I have literally watched how they have advanced at all my schools, how they take home Apple laptops and computers home, and they're able to get on, get on the computer. I'm not, do not, unlike with Jess, I do not wanna take away actual teaching time, though, and that's been vetted with the millions of dollars that we pay for iReady, that we're losing our teaching time. These kids are not grasping it. We are on the lower level of academic success, and so we are the leading surrounding county for one of the lower academic success for our kids. So we definitely need technology, updated technology, but we need teachers in the classroom teaching as well. And so paying millions for a program with a lack of access, we have to rethink that. We need to know why we're paying millions of dollars for programs, but we have maybe two to three computers in a classroom or none, like the classroom that I was in, all year long, we had nothing. And so we definitely need to advance into the 2020 with technology and teachers teaching.
Leo, what are your thoughts?
You know what, Marlene, I had an up-close-and-personal experience with this. Greg Gibson came in to one of my testing labs and asked if I, and I didn't know who he was, asked me to basically, you know, fire up one of the computers. And all of a sudden, I see this guy, and again, I don't know who he is, and he was the consultant, and he's going 11, 12, 13, I go, what are you doing? He goes, I'm counting. I said, you better have a minute hand. He goes, well, that's unacceptable. I go, you know what you're dealing with here? We have 240-plus schools, we have over 200,000 students, we have over 20,000 employees, and it's lunchtime. There's not a pipe big enough to do that. And again, we don't have the money. I gotta give the school board credit. I've been on the bargaining team. To stay above water in these last two or three years, I don't know how they're doing it, but they're doing it. And, you know, you gotta rob Peter to pay Paul, and what's suffering is technology. We just don't have the money to do that. And again, if Tallahassee's listening, wake up. You're hurting the kid.
Thank you. Jennifer, what should we do to enhance technology?
You guys are killing me. You're breaking my heart. Alexandra, hearing your story just kills me. That was my entire job in the School of Improvement, was to go to schools, go to labs, make the lab work, make the $50 million software that we paid for work and get used and make sure that the kids had the equipment. So we need to do that here. If we're gonna spend this kind of money on software, we better make sure we've got the support behind it. But beside that, as a school board, let's never, ever let a software that's that expensive be paid for without our permission. It has to be vetted, and it needs to work on a cell phone. If you can't work it on a cell phone, then you shouldn't give it to the kids, because they don't have a lot of options. I'm sorry, COVID brought out a lot of ugly, and it brought out a lot of terror, and it really hurt families. So we've got to be more thoughtful. If we're gonna go with it, pick the stuff that works.
Thank you. Mitch?
Okay, yeah, no, I agree with Rick, that we need to ensure that students and educators have the equipment, the technology they need to be able to function at school, at home, wherever it is. So I think that's critical. I also think it might be worthwhile to offer basic training to educators and children on basic computer techniques, such as uploading, downloading documents, you know, saving items to the cloud, just basic online meetings. I know my son-- I know my son, I had the experience with my younger son at Walker, and my children, my daughter's at Florida, and my son's at Florida State. With all of them being home, we had some experiences with online training. But like I said, I think training would be a very important offer, that just basic training to educators and to all of the students. I also think we need a broad e-learning platform that everybody's trained on. So that's my answer.
Thank you. And again, I'm being mindful of time. And I'm going to start with Jennifer in this next question. What does this district need to do? Now, granted, we have a new state law that establishes a $47,000, I believe, starting salary for teachers. But what more does the district need to do to attract and retain good teachers? Again, starting with Jennifer.
This is brutal because I moved here in 2013, and when I was looking for a job in education, I passed Hillsborough by. I looked at what they were paying people. I looked at how the schools were doing. And I said, "Why, as an educator, would I want to do that to myself?" It was brutal. It was brutal. I'm being honest. And we need to be competitive. And the only way we're going to be competitive is if we pay better, of course. But the school environment needs to be one where you feel nurtured, you feel adored, you feel accepted. Every school should be the cheerleader for, they love their school. And that's where teachers want to be. It's got to be community-based, and they got to feel appreciated. And the families have to be incorporated. It's, that's just what's lacking. There's just too many broken pieces, and people feel like they're looking from the outside in, and they're fighting this force to get what they need for their charter. So let's change, we need to change the perception of Hillsborough having public schools, period.
Mitch, how would we attract and retain good teachers?
Okay, yeah, I do agree with Jennifer's comment about pay. Pay is important. However, I do think getting strong leaders, strong principals, administrators in the schools. My mom was a principal for a number of years. She retired from Forest Hills Elementary about seven years ago. At the time, I believe it was the largest elementary school in the county. I've seen, just from watching principals, when a good principal moves from one school to another, a lot of times you see the teachers move with that principle. So I think it's important for the district to attract and make sure we got principals in positions in schools that are nurturing, that makes teachers feel welcome, everything that Jennifer just said. I think teachers need to feel appreciated, and I think you need a principal in the position that's a strong leader, that can attract good teachers. And I think that's one of the ways to deal with achievement schools, too. You've got to put strong leaders in those schools. So I think that's where I'd start, trying to get strong principals. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica, your thoughts? And you are muted.
Teacher pay is a good start. Obviously, we need to make sure our teachers are not working two or three jobs so that they can pay their bills. But anybody who got into teaching didn't do it for the salary. They did it because they love education. And we need to make sure we're empowering teachers. We need to make sure, as Jennifer said, that we have environments where they feel nurtured and supported. But they also need to make sure that they have the autonomy to be able to teach in the classroom, and they're not overloaded with too many benchmarks that are constantly moving. We need to make sure that they have a voice in the process, that they feel like their voice is heard when we're at the school board level and we're making policies. We need to engage teachers in the process so they feel like they're being a part of, you know, everything that we're making decision-wise as far as they're concerned. And we need to make sure that we're giving them the resources and the support that they need, whether that's just basic classroom supplies, whether that's access to the support staff and teachers that they need, especially when they have students with accommodations. We need to make sure that we're valuing them, that we're saying thank you, that as a community, we're highlighting how much work teachers do and what they invest into their students. So it really comes to overall environment and making teachers feel valued, empowered, heard, and, you know, that they have some autonomy to be able to do what they love to do.
Thank you. And Rick, how would you suggest that we attract and retain good teachers?
Pay them more money, which is a problem. Well, you know, obviously, that's not the only consideration. But when it comes down to it, and a teacher's got to get a second job to enjoy a decent lifestyle, they're going to look for a different line of work. It's that simple. You know, again, we're 47th in the nation in average teacher pay, which is criminal. Florida should be in the top quartile, not the bottom one. So we got to do something about the people that set the funding for the school district.
Thank you. Alexandra, your thoughts on attracting and retaining good teachers?
And of course, as we all have agreed here, pay is very essential. We know that no one wants to go to work and not, you know, have enough money, like Rick said, to be able to live a nice, comfortable life. But we can't just forget about that. We know that the governor has increased the beginning salary for teachers, but we can't forget about the current teachers. That has not been mentioned in his plan. We have forgot about their, that they have committed time and years. And a lot of these teachers, we need to understand that they can't even afford affordable health care, that they are literally lacking those funds. I have friends, families, and teacher members that have complained about after 15 years, they're bringing home $25,000 just because they're paying for daughter's insurance. That is ridiculous. My husband is a human manager for insurance. We understand the essence of needing insurance, but it does not have to rob the bank when you're paying for that. So we know pay, but we know that we need to make sure they're not retaliated against, and they need to have a seat at the table as well with all stakeholders.
Okay, and we'll finish with Leah on this question. How do we attract and retain good teachers?
Well, everybody looks at the raise in beginning teacher salary, but the problem is, it's another Tallahassee unfunded mandate. They raised the salary, but when Commissioner of Education Corcoran was asked, "Okay, are you providing the money?" Because high tide raises all boats, he said, "No, that's up to the district to do." So someone may come in at 47 and may end up there for close to 10 years, which, again, as Alexandra brought out, what are you doing with the people who are already here? And again, money talks, whether we like it or not. It's something that you will look at. If all of a sudden Pascoe and Pinellas are paying 50, and it's only 47 in Hillsborough County, we're going to see, basically, people leaving to go to a better area.
Yeah. Thank you. The next question is about equity.
Uh-oh. Can't hear you.
In Hillsborough County.
We didn't hear that one.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Bad connection. How do we bring about more equity in the schools? How do we close some of the achievement gaps? And starting with Mitch, if he's on Frozen.
I'm, actually, I served on Early Learning Coalition for a number of years. I was treasurer of the Early Learning Coalition. I think they serve with BPK and School Readiness. I think those are excellent programs. I've read studies before, for every dollar spent on BPK or early learning, you know, school readiness programs, you get, it's something like a $7 return. So I think the school system should look at that. I think if you can get, you know, get kids into those programs, make certain that they, you know, try to get them as prepared as possible when they come into school. Because once they start kindergarten, it's hard to catch up if you're already behind. So I would be a strong proponent for that. And that's, you know, that is where I would, that's one of my focuses, for sure. And I think that's a long way to nearing the achievement gap.
Thank you. Jessica, what can we do for equity in the schools?
Well, first of all, we have to be honest about the inequity within our society in general and how our systemic policies have affected all marginalized communities. And we have to look at the communities holistically. We also have to look at each school individually. There's not one magic bullet that's going to all of a sudden get all achievement schools, you know, up to grade. We need to go into each school individually, and we need to evaluate the needs of those schools. We need to make sure that we have education and a curriculum that actually talks about equity and talks about the history within, you know, our country to make sure that when we're going forward, we're not whitewashing our history and we're talking about, you know, going forward, how we can build real equity within our society. In our schools, we need to look at funding. Like I said, Title I money goes towards retaining teachers, and that's fantastic. We need good teachers in there. But when we talk about just giving them supplies, you know, if they're getting the same supply list and the same access budget supply-wise to schools that have PTAs that give them, you know, hand sanitizers, all of the stuff that they need in the classroom, and our schools are, you know, spending more money on that, we're already starting off at an unequal playing field. So we need to be realistic about our societal inequities. We need to invest, you know, more money in our schools that need it. We need to make sure that we're focusing on, you know, racial justice. We're focusing on all, you know, any marginalized community and talking about justice in those areas. And we need to make sure we're dealing with the trauma of inequities. When we're talking about mental health and wraparound services, we need to make sure we're addressing the trauma that comes from racism or, you know, anti-LGBTQA policies or harassment.
Thank you. And I, I'm sorry to cut you off.
No, no, no.
I want everybody to speak on this important topic.
Absolutely.
What can we do to create more equity in the schools and close some achievement gaps?
My turn?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm going to go back to one of my responses that got truncated, which was my goal number two, to focus more resources on schools with underperforming students. Not enough to provide equal opportunity for a great education to students of all races. What is even more important is to improve educational outcomes for all races. That will require more and better resources applied to the key issues of kindergarten readiness and providing that teacher, counselor, mentor, or community member who can find the key to engaging each child in their own education, turning that light bulb on. More funding is needed to establish the things that the new superintendent is trying to do in the way of family opportunity centers and wraparound community schools in the areas of greatest need.
Thank you. Alexandra, what are we going to do about equity?
Well, reading is so essential, as we all know, right? So we've gotten so far away from enjoyment of reading for our children. And so we need to start at the root, where pre-K, with pre-K, just like Mitch said. Stop teaching to a test and get back to the basics. Kids can enjoy reading if we introduce the basics to them early on. We have taken away the fun part of it, allowing kids to really enjoy it, even bringing in programs, like we used to have Bookit, and it used to do something, just read so many books, you could get a free pizza, things like that, combining with Pizza Hut. So also, the district needs to hire more teachers of color and male teachers as well. And so that would help with the paying creates. When we're sitting at Keene High School, and the number of colored teachers are low to the amount of colored students, that's a problem for them to engage in a record and feel like they have someone to go to. We need to learn from the people, the people that look like them. Our country racial mix-up of students does not match the racial makeup of teachers, and that is a problem. When kids are wanting me as a sub to stay because of the fact that they connect to me, we need more of that, you know? We need someone that looks like us as well in the classrooms when we have a large amount of predominantly colored kids at some schools.
Thank you. Thank you. Leah, what are your thoughts?
You know what, Alexandra? I can't agree with you more. These kids are sitting in a classroom, and they're not seeing people who look like them as teachers or administrators. We need to make a conscious effort of getting people of color into those schools so the kids have role models. That's huge. Also, the Wraparound School Project needs to be extended because these kids, when they go home at night, they may not get another meal till breakfast when they come back to school. They may not get any other reading done. And if you're behind in reading, you're behind in everything. You just can't just say, "Okay, well, social studies, if you can't read the textbook, you got a problem." So we need to concentrate on, one, getting teachers, getting administrators into those schools who look like the population that's there. And two, we need to provide mental health services. We need to provide guidance services. And three, we need to get the parents involved. They need to come to the school. They need to come see what's there. That's important because if you educate the parents, they will buy in. And if they don't buy in, there's your problem right there.
Thank you. Jennifer, finishing with you.
Alex, again, you mentioning the Bookit program was so awesome. I was the person that actually delivered those certificates to the school, so that was my job. But that's another public-private partnership, too. McDonald's also did that with us, so it was pretty great. All I can say in terms of equity, equity typically falls along the lines of poverty. It's where we have poverty is where we lose equity. And that's regardless of race, background, color, skin. It doesn't matter. And in 2019, 43 of the schools in Hillsborough County were considered the lowest performing in the state of Florida. Let that sink in. 39 of these schools have been underperforming for three to five years. This is under your current school board. How did they let this happen, and why did they ignore it for so long? It's inexcusable. Miami-Dade and Broward combined have fewer than we do as one school district all by ourselves. Okay? And then 95% of those students make up those schools that are challenged. They're just from disadvantaged homes. It's financial disadvantage. It's not anything else. So the approach that's going to work with this, again, is to empower the community building. I love that the superintendent shook up the schools and changed up the principals, but wouldn't it have been better if the schools' communities got to pick the principals that were running the schools, and they represented the community they came from? I would prefer that.
And I'm so sorry. Such an important question, and I'm sorry to cut you off on that. We really are about out of time. So before we say thank you and goodbye to everyone, I'd like to ask, I'll go alphabetically. Please tell us where we can go to find out more about you, about your positions, about your campaign, starting with Alexandra.
I've enjoyed this forum today. And so to find more about Alexandra Gilmore, go to www.votealexandrogilmore.com and hope you check out my website and donate, donate, just here for the community.
Thank you. Leah?
Yeah, go to the website, www.leo-the-number-four-schoolboard.com. Instagram, I do not have, but I have a Facebook page, which is leo-four-school-board. And Twitter is at leo underscore board, and my platform is right on there. And Alexandra, I agree with you. Let's start donating.
Okay.
I love having options. Jennifer, how to calculate, learn more about you?
I mean, first off, don't look on any Trump websites because you're not going to find me there. I do have a Facebook. I've got a Twitter. I'm on my LinkedIn account. I've avoided Instagram as well. I use it for my business, but not for my personal. And it's all teacher for school board. Lastly, I posted my entire resume on the Supervisor of Elections.
Oh, that's right.
So you did. Everything you want to know, and it's on my LinkedIn profile.
Okay. Mitch, where can we learn more about your campaign?
I'll give you my webpage. It's www.votemitchthrower.com. Thank you.
And Jessica?
Yeah, you can go to my website, www.jessicavon.us. You can find me on Facebook. On my website, I have links to my Instagram and my Twitter. You can give me a phone call, 813-857-1571. I would love to hear from as many voters as possible. I'm running a really reflective campaign, and I need as many voices as possible. So find me and contact me.
Thank you. And Rick, where can we find out more about your campaign?
Well, being a dinosaur among the group here, I have just opened a Facebook account. And the real place to find out more about me is a website called kidsfirstflorida.com, which is a voter education website, has about 40 pages of voter information, several pieces on K through 12 public education. And Alexandra, I would ask you to go look at that because it explains what a juggernaut the Orange County School District is, that they've got an extra $3 billion from a sales tech referendum that's been in place for 15 years. And they got plenty of money to do everything they want. Well, Hillsborough is not in the same boat, and neither is every other large school district.
Thank you. And on behalf of the chambers, 1,400 members and its board of directors, we want to thank you for joining us today and for your willingness to serve in elective office. And this concludes our candidate forum. Thank you again.